I touched some earlier.
Before I come into Congress.
This is a highway supermarch. You expressed it. Just even if like it happened, you'd still have something.
That's my...
Slate?
There's nobody, yeah. I was... Pick up the phone at home.
Now we're here for Perry. I mean, I want to make like a whole collage pictures of all of us.
All right, Wade, you got that one numbered now.
See, we have a few. You're asking what people... Is it a book? We're all...
Okay, seven o'clock, boy. Welcome everyone to the September fifth planning board meeting. Would you join in a pleasure?
The United States of America to the Republic of Christians. One nation, united in this world, with justice and law.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Pishani.
Here.
Mr. Darine.
Yeah.
Mr. Cozel.
Here.
Mr. Malfo.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
All right, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The Lachter, why don't you start with the Lachter?
The Lachter subdivision located just west of 1854 Lake Road, the applicant, the commander, the group requesting preliminary final set plan subdivision approval along the public hearing. At the request, it was tabled, that application is going to be tabled to the January 2nd, 2024 meeting.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
First scheduled banner on tonight's agenda, Lakefront Soccer Sign located at 1645 Volter Industrial Park. The applicant Kyle McBride is requesting sign approval to allow 52 square foot building Mallard Fassad sign associated with Lakefront Soccer Club on a 39.28 acre parcel located in an industrial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you for having me. Pretty simple, it's our lakefront logo on the...
Just give us your name.
Oh, Kyle McBride, I'm the club director at Lakefront Soccer Club. Been here before, I feel like I'll be here a lot from now on. We're looking to put in aluminum logo on the south side of our concession building, kind of branding our facilities, make sure people know that they're the Lakefront Soccer Club facility. Pretty simple design, it's an aluminum front to back. Vital Signs will be installing it, they submitted a form for us. If you have any questions, I can answer.
And is it just the one side going or the outside of it? Is that lit?
Nope.
Unlit?
Are the other signs already on the building or are they being added at the same time?
That was just Vital Signs trying to give us ideas for things in the future. Those won't be going in, just the logo on the top side.
Just the one side? Guess size wise, Josh? It's okay?
Uh, yeah, they're allowed 145 square feet, but they're posing at 51 so it will...
Okay, yeah. All right, anybody any issues with it?
No.
All right. Do a seeker at it. You got a seeker for it or... I'll make a motion for seeker, just a one listed action from... What did you get, a type two, right? Type two action for something? With no impact, no environmental issues. That's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody want to make a motion for the approval?
I'll make a motion for approval for the Lake, Lakefront Soccer Sign located at 1645 Volter Industrial Park. We have 52 square foot building out, it's not lit, building out inside.
Can I do something? Second, second, all over here?
All right, man.
What's up?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Second item on tonight's agenda, Bird's Sower Conifer Cove subdivision located on the west side of Webster Road, just north of the Bird Sanctuary Trail. Applicant Grove Underhill LLC is requesting sketch plan review associated with proposed nine lot single-family residential cluster subdivision on a 5.55 acre parcel in a single-family residential district under sections 269-5 and 296-27 of the code of the town of Webster.
And now we're in business.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Vars from BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of the landowner and applicant Grove Underhill LLC. As mentioned, we're here this evening to present to you and discuss with the board a sketch plan for a proposed single-family residential development, single-family residential subdivision of five and a half acres in a residential R3 zone. As I mentioned, the property does consist of about five and a half acres and it's located along the west side of New York State Route 250. It occupies about 285 feet of frontage along the state highway and it's north of the town of Webster's conservation lands, conservation area that encompasses the Bird Sanctuary Trail. Property is bounded to the west and to the north by existing single-family residential development, Conifer Cove Lane, Holly Road, and Foothill Circle town roads. The property is currently vacant and is characterized by successional vegetative growth. At the west end of the property, as we mentioned, Conifer Cove Lane, which is a town road, dead ends at the property's west property line and it does have a temporary turnaround at that dead end. The owner applicant is proposing a residential subdivision of these lands for single-family residential lots and this would be achieved through the extension of Conifer Cove Lane to the east. This would complete the street extension out to Webster Road. It would provide an alternate means of access to and from the neighborhood and it would propose single-family lot residential development consistent with the existing single-family residential neighborhoods that exist north of the Bird Sanctuary Trail lands. But the applicant is proposing this development as a cluster subdivision pursuant to town law section 278 and town code section 296-27. As part of that process, we have prepared for the board's consideration and as required by the town code, a conventional plan layout to determine the allowable density of the five and a half acres per the R3 zoning district. We did this through two means, both identified within the code and came up with a yield of nine single-family lots for the five and a half acres. One means of doing that, and this was provided in your application package, is the preparation of what is known as the conventional plan, a plan that is prepared where the lots do all conform with the R3 zoning criteria. And in this case, the R3 zoning criteria is a minimum lot area of 22,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 100 feet. The conventional plan that we provided to you illustrates how those nine lots could be configured, including the extension of a town road, meeting the requirements of the town road of a 60-foot right of way that would encompass the public utilities to serve the development. The other means of determining density within the clustering provisions of the town code is spelled out in town code section 296-27D, which is basically a calculation process you walk through based on the total project area less any lands that need to be set aside, whether it is for public right of ways or any natural feature protections. Those calculations were provided within the letter of intent, the application letter submitted to you and they're also identified on the cluster plan, they're spelled out, they're spelled out on the cluster plan also. And that calculation showed a maximum yield of 9.3 acres, so obviously we round down. So through both of those mechanisms, we were able to determine that the allowable density on this property is nine single-family lots. So the applicant is proposing a cluster subdivision plan of this property and this plan, we do believe, meets the intent of town code section 296-27 point B, which spells out the intent of cluster subdivision design within the town of Webster. And that intent spells out that cluster subdivisions are, the intent of them is to encourage flexibility in the design of a subdivision, to promote appropriate use of land, facilitate adequate and economical provision of streets and utilities, and to preserve natural and scenic qualities and open spaces. We believe the proposed clustering plan we provided to you achieves this and this achieves it in several ways, which we did spell out in the application letter. This includes the fact that we provide an adequate and practical approach to stormwater management on the property by placing it within a half acre set aside parcel to consolidate all of those practices into one, onto one parcel. We also provide lands along New York State Route 250 to, that would accomplish a couple things. First of all, it does provide as a, or serves as a buffer between the state highway and the residential neighborhood to the west. And also through an extension of the town lands to the south of property would allow an extension of town lands up to what would be the extension of the Conifer Cove Lane right of way, such it would provide the ability to extend the Bird Sanctuary Trail or a, I guess, a link that would allow residents of Conifer Cove Lane and those neighborhoods to have direct access to the trail. So it's taking, the clustering allows us to take advantage of the presence of the town open space to the south of the property, the presence of the trail and be able to expand and encourage access to those lands from the existing residential neighborhoods through the provisions of the town land extension up to Conifer Cove Lane. The lot standards that are proposed with it as part of the cluster subdivision is a minimum lot width of 90 feet, a minimum lot area of 16,000 square feet, and 10-foot side setbacks. The lots would still maintain the R3 zoning criteria of 50-foot front setbacks and 50-foot rear setbacks. For the nine lots proposed on the cluster subdivision, the lot widths range from 90 feet wide to 120 feet wide and the lot sizes range from 16,000 square feet to 24,400 square feet. So that averages out for the nine lots, an average lot width of 105 feet and an average lot area of 19,455 feet. The cluster plan as proposed though, also remains consistent with the existing single-family residential development in the immediate area and specifically on Conifer Cove Lane itself. The Conifer Cove Lane as extends, as it extends to the west and terminates in a cul-de-sac, has lot widths that range from 65 feet wide to 100 feet wide and has a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. The cluster plan that we are proposing provides a logical extension of Conifer Cove Lane consistent with the existing development within these neighborhoods by also providing the benefits that we've mentioned here this evening and spell out for you in the letter of intent or application letter. All nine lots would be served by public water and public sanitary sewer through extension of existing facilities that are located within the Conifer Cove Lane right of way. As we mentioned, we would consolidate the stormwater management facility in the northwest corner of the property and also the proposed access point onto New York State Route 250 does have adequate site distance per the requirements of the New York State DOT. A couple last things, we did receive the MRV group letter dated November 28th and we received that on Friday. We did provide this morning written responses to those, but I basically highlighted our responses already in the presentation this evening, which is our belief and our justification that the application of the clustering provisions of the town code is appropriate for this property and that as proposed, it does meet the intent of the town code for clustering. So as such, myself and actually Mr. Mitchell Brodsky and Jeff Bell, both from Grove Underhill LLC, are here to answer any questions, but we are looking to discuss this with you and look for the support of the board for the clustering of the subdivisions and providing us the necessary direction so we can proceed with a preliminary application in the near future. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We do have both the conventional and the cluster joining in front of us and this was discussed pretty much in life at the PRC meeting last week. The consensus actually was to build it under standard sized lots at that meeting. You're giving reason why it could also be otherwise. On the side with... With the conventional, where you're showing detention in the back of a couple of the lots there, that would have to be changed. It has to be a one parcel as opposed to carry them over, you know, under two. Similar to you had, what you're showing on your, on your cluster, all in one lot. I don't really know, and again, this, PRC, that parking area you're proposing there, that wasn't really too well accepted by everybody, you know, the town.
And that's fine, it was just an option that if the parks committee or departments, use it, had any desire for it, that it would be made available by the developer.
Now, the original development, Conifer, is that, is that a cluster, those lots are cluster development in there or was that standard?
We did not, we had not found the record of what, how that subdivision was approved, whether it was approved under standard zoning at the time or whether it was a cluster. We do not know that either.
I think that was standard development, that, than standard sized lots. They both are obviously projects, a project that's to have been anticipated because the road did end, there's a temporary turnaround going over to, over Webster Road. So now, you know what, let's do this, this is a, this is an ad hoc public hearing, that's next meeting, okay? This is just a sketch plan, which is preliminary is what it is, but apparently you got a bunch of neighbors and that, right? So we'll open it to the public, we'll open it anyways and let you speak, but just, I'm going to ask you, please, just keep it short, don't go in the whole length deep, you know? You want to do that? I was going to ask, is, sure, go ahead, up and you can speak, just give us your name and address.
My name is Hugh Lee. I am a resident of Conifer Cove Lane. My name is Hugh Lee, I am a resident of Conifer Cove Lane. So obviously, I am not as familiar with many of the questions you might be looking at from a technical or engineering or building side, but I would note a couple of things. One is that our concerns, we do have a lot of water coming into our house to begin with. So obviously, we would want to know what effect this kind of development, what effect the development as well as what effect the reservoir or holding pond being there would have on our residents as well as some of the other people next to us, because I know that the people behind us would also have that same concern. The second thing I think that we'd be concerned with, and it sounds like you actually addressed a little bit of it, is I think there is probably a technical plan that would be acceptable and then there's like more of the cultural feel for the town and we would probably be willing to speak to that. I think one of the concerns that we have is we want to make sure that if we've been a standard development that it conforms to that same kind of feeling, I think, I just heard that the parking is out, we were worried about the parking type of situations there. So more than just the structure, obviously, it's how it affects Webster community and the culture that's all around that, and particularly our neighborhood, we talked about. From my other perspective, while I don't have children anymore, the cut through, I am concerned with people flying through there and I'm sure some of my neighbors can kind of talk to that. And I'm not sure how heavy that would be, but it's a question from our perspective. The third question from my perspective again is, and it kind of goes back to the community again and our side of the community, and that is the environment in terms of the Bird Sanctuary, the walking capabilities and what it does to our ability to both access, which if I understand, Mr. Vars' access was down there, but also people from other parts of the neighborhood having to come through our neighborhood or come through our yard actually to get through that. I'm not sure how that would work or would they have to walk all the way down and all the way over? So those are kind of some issues that we'd be concerned with in terms of water, in terms of how it's, in keeping it is with our overall development and how it affects the Bird Sanctuary and people's access as well as traffic.
I, I'm his wife, and just to add on the water part of it.
Well, hey, women.
You have to go to the...
You want to keep my wife?
I'm Grace Lee, I'm Hugh Lee's wife. Again, we live at 1290 Conifer Cove, which is adjacent to where the water reservoir...
Can I stay by the light, walk where you lose it?
Sorry. So we're adjacent right to where the water reservoir would be, but to add on to what my husband said, I just want to make sure about the elevation of the development that would be going next to us, that it's not higher than our property, because obviously the water is going to come towards our property. So I'm just concerned that that whole development is not higher than the existing Conifer Cove properties.
Yeah, that's generally, that would be engineering detail, and he'll explain that and no water will actually run off of that parcel, a near parcel. And that's why I put bill on it with swells and so on, as he explained. Okay, now, is there anyone else who should make a comment? What's your name and address?
My name is Eric Holtz, 1293 Foothill Circle. And my first and major concern is what's in the ground back there? What's underneath the soil, is it rock or slate? And my, my main concern is that it could be blasting. Because obviously if they have the construction company has to dynamite or use any type of blasting techniques, that could affect foundations in that whole neighborhood. So that's my main concern. If there's, is there going to be a test to see what's underneath there and make sure that, you know, there's no dynamite or blasting?
Okay.
My first concern. We talked about the retention ponds, we know with retention ponds come the geese. With the geese come the feces and the mess they make. That's a concern of mine. That whole area is green space. I spent years trying to track the Baltimore Orioles back to my yard, the Bluebirds, everything. All of that is going to be destroyed, the whole habitat is going to be destroyed. There's fox, there's cavities, there's everything back there and, you know, that's, that's one of my concerns as well. And then on the application, there's a question, you know, will it increase traffic? Well, obviously, if you cut to 250, the traffic is going to be increased. Anybody who lives at Holly, Conifer Cove neighborhood is going to cut down Conifer Cove now instead of go pre-ride and, I don't live at Conifer Cove, but if I did and I had children, I'd be very concerned with the increased traffic pattern that's going to come through there.
You do understand that the road ended right there on that property though, right?
That's correct.
Okay. The intent was to keep going through.
I'm sure that was contention 50 years ago or 40 years ago.
And as far as your other comment about being forever wild, no it isn't.
No, I know it's not.
Because if you buy it.
No, I know it's not forever wild, I'm just saying, development is going to destroy the wildlife in there.
May not destroy it, it will relocate it.
Correct, away from everybody else that lives there, it's going to be relocated away from ourselves, the wildlife.
Relocate away.
That's all I see.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who should...
Number one, 1291 Foothill Circle, concerns particularly, I know it is not forever wild, but the Bird Sanctuary Trail over time has been impinged by the neighborhood and it is such a gift to the community that I hate to see more impinging on that space there of the wildlife that lives there. I also don't know the plans here, but seems to me that most of the development within Webster, there is clear cutting and then building and given the age of our neighborhood and the beauty of the trees and all the foliage, that if clear cut would not fit, would even more destroy the habitat of the animals. And so I'm very concerned about clear cutting that. I don't know, again, what the plans are, but pulling off the top soil, solid netting people, it just changes the whole feeling of what we're about in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Listen up.
I'm Cecilia Rodella, 1291 Foothill Circle, 1986. We were over in the town office building when Mr. Ramisisi wanted to develop his property of El Arbour. I was there, he wanted to dynamite. I don't know if that is the case, I'm going to stand with what I stood back in 1986. If dynamiting has to occur, the builders have to put up a bond with the town to protect the people and our homes. They have a right to build, they don't have a right to destroy our property and our property values. Seven years later, after I went up against Mr. Ramisisi, he built what I suggested at that meeting, which were patio homes. I think the whole neighborhood, if dynamiting has to occur, we will all concur that a bond has to be put up. And like in 1986, when the board approved that, it needs to be done again.
Okay, thank you. My guess, I don't know what the requirements are, but there would definitely have to be a license and so on for any blasting out of sight, that would be a definite.
Don't destroy my property.
Hi, my name is Stevie Hutter. And I live at 1286 Conifer Cove.
What was your name, what's your...
Steve Hutter. Just, I concur with everything that's been said up here, I'm not going to repeat all that, but I did want to try to address one question, hopefully as pertinent. I had heard that these homes were being built not for individual sale, but for long-term lease, so there wouldn't be permanent homeowners in those homes. I don't know if that has any impact on zoning or planning process, but I'll ask the company to comment on that and maybe you could comment on that as well.
Okay, you can address these questions, you guys have all hit up. All right, is that it, anyone else? You good for that? Okay. Peter, you want to, you want to address any?
Peter, you want to, you want to address any?
I guess what I'll do is I'll just address it kind of as an overall response, in the fact that, you know, this is the purpose of this evening, as a sketch plan review, is for us to present the initial concept, and then use it as a mechanism to receive feedback, so that we know what the key and critical issues are as we prepare the formal application. And as part of that formal application process, there are several requirements we know we have to meet and address, and those include drainage, stormwater management, being designed for the town standards and the New York State DBC standards. There will be soil and geotechnical investigations to understand the soil properties of the overall property, if there's presence of groundwater, bedrock, all of that, and thus what engineering design has to be completed to address that. Point being is, there is, and then there's the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which the planning board will take the lead on. And as you know, that process requires the board to take a hard look at all of the various factors that are raised during the process. We have the responsibility as the applicant to address those to the board's satisfaction, to show that there should not be the potential for any significant environmental impact. So my point being is, this is all good information for us to use, to know what are the key and important issues, just like I assume, I, like, I say I assume, I know it will occur. We will receive the PRC memo, or admin, which will identify the staff issues. We'll take comments we've heard this evening from the board members also, as it relates to density, lot standards change, such that we use all of that to put that into framing the overall preliminary subdivision application that will come back before this board to address those comments and propose the subdivision on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Sir, you did not address the last speaker's question as to, will the houses be leased, or will they be sold?
You can't be in the audience talking anymore. You can't even get the privilege to speak. Again, this isn't a public hearing, so let him, there'll be another meeting in the future, that'll be preliminary hearing. Preliminary is a public hearing, that's where anyone can speak. We're doing this just to get some information, to see where people stand, that's all. So I want to make it, you know, a kind of tapping and debatable situation. So, you can hold it till then? Thanks. All right. Okay, Peter, thank you. I guess right now, the first thing we should be looking at, for is, to develop this as cluster development or standard...
Our three development.
I don't believe that this falls in the, what we intend. It could be a cluster development.
I agree with that.
I just, I knew it should just be a standard development. I bring you that stormwater management, you'd be on one lot, or not spread over four or five lots. But this is not likely, but we would like to see a cluster development.
Okay. Anybody else have come in?
I'm just looking at the stormwater management here, where it's...
Well, I want to, I want to go to stormwater. I want to just, technical development initially.
Standard or cluster?
Either cluster or standard development.
Cluster, cluster, you know, we intend cluster to give us a, meet your mind, green streets.
Yeah, correct.
This is not...
Yeah, I think we're agreeing with them then. That's, that was, that was the consensus at the PRC. Same thing, you can tell that.
I don't stand.
Standard?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think everybody's in, okay, so we lost one, very good. So regarding to the size, there'll be the standard sized lots, there won't be, you know, cluster technical development. The next question, now, go ahead, that's, now you're talking about drainage. The way it's shown in the standard development, it's showing it on, you know, like, a little over two of the lots. That, years ago, unless it, unless that became a homeowners association, unless, unless that became a homeowners association or something where it's maintained, you know, then we allowed it on a couple, a couple of lots like that. But it's been the practice to one lot for the drainage. So the lot, the way you got it actually designed, Peter, on your cluster development, your work, but with standard sized lots. I think that's the direction. You guys agree with that?
Yes.
I think that's where we...
My only thing is the location of it. If it's on one lot right there, as it's shown on the cluster plan, it's just to me, that looks like it's too close to the road. Usually, those detention ponds are kind of in the back or on the road.
No, no, no. No, you want it there. They won't, it's going to have to be accessible for the town. They want to have, close to the road as possible. Where they have access to it.
I understand.
Yeah, it's a lot of them.
Usually, there's a road down to them.
No. No, it's standard like that. The one on Bay Road, I got one of them. The new developer proposed for Salt Road, it was, it's, it was their whole life of the Salt Road there. You know, so that's, you know, that's, that's a definite, they want to have, highway department wants to have access to that, by all means. All right, so the gist of it, I guess, would be, standard lots, drainage, and one of the, one of the lots, basically, all the drainage, yeah, one, one lot, actually, if that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about that? And I, we'd be willing to take it to the PRC, however, you know, obviously, with setting a drainage facility, topography is a, is one of the controlling factors, because obviously, you want to locate these facilities at the low end of the property, where the current drainage patterns are. There is the possibility, actually, that this facility could actually be split by the right-of-way. My point being is, what I mean by that, is it actually could be on the north and the south side, because of the way that drainage pattern is, which is a southeast, northwest drainage pattern. So when you say, put it all on one lot, we may end up putting it on both sides of the right-of-way. And that could actually function better. But we'd be willing to take that to the PRC and walk that through with them. I just don't want to get...
If you did that, Peter, so like, you have like two ponds, basically.
Yeah, and then you...
So one would be on the north side, one on the south side.
And they'd probably be connected by a pipe under the...
I don't think that would be an issue, because then, on the one side of the road, that could be with lot number one, we'll call it.
Right.
And if it's on the south side, it might be with lot number five.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Does that show that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that would be an issue. Dave, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, it might up with the...
Oh, what do you think? Something like that.
Well, I think we just have to get more information related to...
Yeah, but I mean, the theory of it, in other words, it's not stretching across two separate, two lots, or three lots.
Yeah, the, the individual green infrastructure that's shown on the lots there, I think is not realistic, you know?
Well, I, I'll disagree with that in the fact that it is a standard required prac, or recommended practice of doing a rain garden for a, an individual lot. They actually prefer it to be on the actual lot itself. It's just our typical practices are to consolidate them into a single facility. It, and the point is, you can do either or, you know, so...
I just think there needs to be more information related to the, to bringing to...
Yeah, but you say, bring that into the PRC.
That's what we would do.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, and...
Basically, the theory of that, to me, kind of unique, but that actually considers a buffer between the current residential also.
Correct. Yes, it would.
And what, and that's the reason we've done this years ago, when it's on two or three lots, originally done like that, years ago. What happened? You took care of it, I didn't take care of mine, and we got into issues, and the town got involved this way. It's on one lot, that, that homeowner generally takes care of the pond.
Right. I agree, yes.
So it's not, besides, it would be an issue? I don't, okay, we're good with that.
Yep.
The fellows agree with that, right? All right. All right, anything else we need?
No.
That's, again, it's just, sketch plans, so... All right, I guess, anybody else have questions, or?
Nothing.
All right, that's a good one. What's that name?
I think we gave them all the information.
Yeah?
Yep.
Those were the biggest concerns.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Lord.
Okay.
The final application for tonight, eighteen twenty Tabouray Trail, accessory structure with roof mounted solar panels. Located at eighteen twenty Tabouray Trail, the applicant Jamie Newtown is requesting preliminary final approval, which includes a public hearing associated with the construction of twenty-four by forty-foot, parentheses, nine sixty square foot accessory structure, consisting of a covered pavement, poolhouse, and storage area with roof mounted solar panels, and a three-point zero-one acre parcel, located in a large lot, single condo residential district, under sections one fifty-five dash five, subsection D, subsection four, three fifty dash thirteen, and three fifty dash thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster. Mr. Newtown?
Good evening. Good morning. Do you have your...
Not the audio.
Oh, no, I have the... Good evening. James Newtown, eighteen twenty Tabouray Trail. Here this evening seeking approval for a thirty, I'm sorry, a twenty-four by forty-foot accessory structure. This building did go in front of the John Moore on November fourteenth, I believe it was, and was approved for the SEPA variances of forty-five feet. The structure will be used kind of multipurpose, would have an open pavilion, just a covered roof area, which is approximately twenty-three to four feet wide by twelve feet, and then the next two sections would basically be indoor, kind of a poolhouse, have the pool pump equipment, have some furniture in it, and some cabinets. And that space, and then the back space, twenty-four foot wide by approximately fourteen foot, would become storage space and house some of the materials and things that are in the current shed. The proposal would be to eliminate the small, what I call the doghouse, poolhouse, pool pump house, that's shown in the graphic, just to the north of the fence, and then replace the shed that is twenty-one foot from the property line, and that would ultimately be eliminated. The, just a few things to note reflective of the surrounding properties. There are approximately ten different structures within about a three-quarter mile radius that have, I should say residences, that have multiple accessory structures on them. Those are seventeen seventy, seventeen seventy-one Lake Road, eight Eagles Landing, one fifteen Basket Road, two thirty-five Basket Road, two oh-five County Line Road, that's Windmill Farms, two twenty-five County Line Road, eighteen twenty-seven Watered Road, eighteen forty-nine Watered Road, eighteen fifty Watered Road, three fifty Basket Road, and four thirty-six slash four forty Basket Road. All of those have two accessory structures that are larger than what I'm proposing.
Did you work on that, didn't you?
What's that?
You did your homework, didn't you?
Yes, I tried to. So all of those have structures on them, multiple accessory structures exceeding the square footage of what I'm proposing between my existing accessory structure and the new structure. In addition to that, eighteen fourteen Trellis Circle, so this would be more immediate, within a tenth of a mile of me, or less, eighteen fourteen Trellis Circle has a poolhouse, cabana, and storage building on it. That's my immediate neighbor to the west. Seventeen ninety-five Trellis Circle, which is part of the Watered subdivision that I live in, has a forty by forty or sixteen hundred square foot pole barn, and they could also have up to a two hundred square foot shed, which would be eighteen hundred square feet in total. Eighteen twenty-five Tabouray Trail has a thirty by forty pole barn at twelve hundred square feet, plus could add another two hundred square foot in a shed if they so desire, for fourteen hundred square feet. My proposal falls just from the middle of those two. These are immediate neighbors, I should add, at nine hundred and sixty square feet plus seven hundred and twenty square feet, or sixteen, eighty, twelve square feet between the two structures. If I were to compare it against the other ten that I listed off, it's pale in comparison to the size of those properties that have two accessory structures on them. All the building materials will be made to match the house, posing a black metal roof structure, and then a siding, probably not going to be vinyl, it's probably going to be a vertical, I forget the exact name, metal standing seam, I think is the verbiage that they use today. Standing seam metal, at least on the main front facade. It will have brick or a fake stone structure on the front facade that will match the outdoor kitchen, that's immediately outside on my patio, so it'll all blend together and be consistent in nature. Just to note that this structure is pretty much hidden on all sides. You certainly would not see it from the private drive on Tabouray Trail. My neighbor to the west would not be able to see it, because I've got a significant amount of trees, over two hundred trees, on the western property boundary, and part of my parcel, excuse me. There's a significant hedgerow bordering the property to the west, I'm sorry, to the east, Saranowa, and the property to the, to the north of me, I believe totals about twenty-four acres between the residence and a secondary lot owned by the same owner. And they are at an elevation difference, I'm going to guess, of about fifteen feet. So their vantage point, looking from ground level or grade, is up. I'm actually doing a, like what I would consider making an improvement, because I could have a shed ten by twenty, five foot off the lot line. And I'd just like to note that I do have a variance for the heat pipe on that shed today, so I could literally plop a shed ten foot by twenty foot long, five foot off the property line. I could also put a six foot high fence on the property line and paint any color of my desire, which I'd be glad to do. Otherwise, I would do neither of those, and I would build this thirty, or twenty-four by forty-foot structure, forty-five foot off the property line, and at a vantage point from the neighbor to the north, they'd never see it. That's all I have.
Okay. You still weren't prepared. So what, the variance was what, just for the extra building inside?
Yeah, second accessory structure. Note that there's no condition on that variance that was received on November fourteenth. The only conditions proposed, are posed on that variance, were planning board approval, seeking governmental permits, and no living space or commercial operations out of that, which, if I don't get the size tonight, I can still construct an accessory structure, a second accessory structure of twenty by twenty-five to meet the five hundred and not need your approval. Plus, I could put up a oversized shed at ten by twenty foot for two hundred square feet. So essentially, I could achieve what I want without seeking your approval this evening.
Now, I think what you're proposing is realistic for what your uses are. I don't have an issue with that. There was, oh, okay, this, well, it is a public hearing. So, ma'am, this is a public hearing, so now if you wish to speak, you can go up and, up to the microphone? Did you want to speak?
He's offering for you to speak.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, is I'm offering you to go off and state your name and my address and seat?
Now, we're...
I'm Shasta Combe, I believe we're the northern neighbor. We have had a lot of trouble with drainage ever since then. Those houses were put up there, the, there used to be an orchard, never had any problem with flooding ever since then. Our property, supposedly, they raised the taxes, say it's worth more, it's trashed. I'm concerned about drainage from a roof structure that size, and also, I'm concerned about layer from the metal roof. Probably the solar panels would angle the other way, you know, the southwest way, but a metal roof gives a lot of layer, and how I... But a metal roof gives a lot of flare, and how I know about that is previous owner of that house put a shed right back on the lot line, put an aluminum boat behind it. From our kitchen window in the afternoon when I was trying to work at the kitchen sink, it was terrible. And then he put like, like an aluminum silver tarp over it, which was even shinier, and it flapped in the breeze so noisily, all wetter, all summer, everything. So I went up to the town hall today, tried to ask for a map to see how this, this will, you know, how close it will be to our property, but I couldn't, they couldn't show me a map. Our property sits at an angle that's hard to tell, you know, would we be able to see it or not? But I'm also really worried about runoff from a roof that size, especially a metal roof. I, I mean, you know that the downspouts are going to head our way. You know the ground is already saturated, and they're, because they're higher than us. It's not just stormwater runoff, it's, you know, all the water people use every day and put into that hill. And if they ever have to drain the pool, I mean, normal backwashing probably wouldn't be a problem, but if they ever have to drain that pool, you know it's going to go right through our house, in the back of our garage, down through our crawl space where our furnace is lying on its side, right through the carpeted lower level. That's what it does, ever since they took that orchard out of there and put all those houses up there. So I'm, I'm really concerned about drainage and also flare off of the metal roof.
Your pool is, well, okay, it's, okay, thank you. Go ahead and address that. You already have a pool there, don't you, Jamie?
Uh, pool's about there since, uh.
So that's not, that isn't an issue?
Probably fourteen years.
The, um, just, just. More chongering, would you with that?
No, I, I have no issues with the pool. And just to note, I noticed that you swung up to my house before and chatted about, uh, you, you swung up to my house probably about five, seven years ago, you, you were asking what I was doing, when I was doing some weed whip, whipping.
Something about, I, I think it was a lot longer than that.
Yeah, maybe it was ten years ago, I was weed whipping out back. Long story short, I, I told the lady, I'm sorry, your name, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Prior to that, I reestablished that property in Apple Orchard. I've got over two hundred and twenty apple trees on that property today that were stripped from that property when they built the development, Watered subdivision back in nineteen, I'm sorry, about two thousand and one-ish. So I've reestablished, you know, sources to extract groundwater and to mitigate some of the issues related to stormwater. In addition to the Apple Orchard, I planted at least another forty to fifty trees around the property, so it's well tree. It's certainly, the orientation of the roof is, it's a slight north, northwest orientation, southwest, or southeast northwest, I guess, is how you would picture it. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how much of the roof you'd really see. You're going to see them, if anything, you would see the rear peak at, at most.
I'd really like to see on a map which way it angles, and also which way the downspouts would be going.
Yeah, the, the downspouts would more than likely tie into the drainage system around my house, which goes down to the stormwater retention pond on the bottom of my driveway. So nothing would go to the north.
Because we are stuck with a creek and a wetland on our property.
All right, ma'am, okay, we, we can't, we can't have just a discussion back and forth. The, the drainage, I think what the applicant is saying, the, all his, I can't really see her, she's a bad girl.
You can step back up here, he's, he's talking to you.
I, I, I can't really even tell who's talking.
Yeah, Mr. Frishani speak.
Oh, okay.
No, what I'm saying is, right now, he's going to address, he's addressed that, where the water's going. So your concerns about water should not impact you whatsoever. He's draining that water into his own detention pond, so that'll be directed not near you. As far as the boat, that could be so.
What I'm saying, everything comes down the hill toward our house.
Oh, I know, I own the thirty-three acres right next to you, which is partially in farm field, and I, so I own the property just north of you, thirty-three acres. And I know how wet it is in there because I tried to do some, I tried to plant some crops in there.
And it was watered from, from this.
Oh, I know where it comes from.
It's been running ever since several houses up there. It goes in the back of our garage.
Okay, okay, okay. We have that, I understood that. But that isn't from this project.
No.
That, we're not, we don't have that.
But I'm saying, if they end up, if they drain the pool.
Hold on, what I'm saying, ma'am, please.
That would be a problem.
I would never drain it to the north, I have plenty of red stormwater retention at the bottom of my property.
This application is in this evening for approval here, not any other ones. So wherever your water's coming from, isn't coming from his property.
No.
All right, so then we can't deal with it.
Well, it's coming from the hill up there.
Don't talk yet. Please, don't talk yet.
What?
Please don't talk yet, wait. His application is in here this evening, that's the only one we're dealing with. Now, if there's water draining onto your property from somewhere else, that's something else that has to be dealt with. But that has nothing to do with this application.
I'm worried about adding any more water.
This will not be adding any more water. Let's get away from the water back there. Roof you're putting is, is that, is that chrome, is it silver?
No, it's a block.
Okay, so, okay, so there's no.
No, it's a, it's a block, block, no, no.
So there's, yeah, okay, I just wanted to.
Right, no.
It's a block.
A single steel roof. All right, we're good with that. Anybody, any other, there's no anyone else, there isn't anyone else in here, so. All right, then we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Anybody, any concerns? You explained everything, went to the zoning board, got his approvals there. It's a simple addition, really, to what he's, what he has there, no?
And I'm willing to accept the condition, which typically in my past life on the plain chair, there's a zoning board, I would have included it, I'm willing to accept the condition for the removal of the shed, so if this is your input, it's up to you. It, it's a good shed, it's probably going to be relocated to my neighbor to the east.
We'll leave that up to you.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with, I mean, you've got, it's not like you've got a confined lot, you're fringing on anybody else.
No, I think so.
Three acres, yeah. All right, anybody, any questions, concerns?
No.
It's a nice setup. Interesting, too, you have your own drainage going to your pond?
Well, the, the way that the apron ties it around my house, it goes down to the stormwater pond, which is at the bottom of that dead end road, which is Taberray Trail. So essentially, a majority of that stormwater retention pond sits on my property. My house elevation difference has got to be at least, I'm going to guess somewhere around twenty feet from that stormwater retention pond to the, the garage grade.
So a good drive, okay.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah. All right, um, we've got to do a sit down on this.
I've got it.
Have you got it?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay, go ahead.
Make motion for a sit down for eighteen twenty Taberray Trail accessory structure with roof mounted solar panels. The town of Webster Plainmore considers the request by applicant Jamie Newtown to construct a twenty-four by forty, nine hundred sixty square foot accessory structure consisting of a covered pavilion, pool house, and storage area with roof mounted solar panels on a three point oh one acre parcel, having SBL number zero five one dot zero one dash one dash five five located at eighteen twenty Taberray Trail. Planning board classifies the proposed action to be a twenty-two action under section six one seven dot five C, section nine of the state environmental review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion for, for, again, this is preliminary, motion for a tool, for preliminary? Oh, Jamie, is there a, just as presented, or is this, you, you have a number to draw into, or?
Uh, I would say as presented, I do not have a number to draw.
That's the one that will go in then?
Yeah.
So, Dave, you want to make?
Yeah, we have the motion. Reapproval for accessory building. At eighteen twenty Taberray Trail, the lot is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plane. Placement of the building should conform well set by the requirements. Building should not be placed nearer to the front property line than the rear line of the front door of the main building and residence of the lot. No floor in the building will be higher than the existing structure. No commotion roof shall occur in the parcel. Accessory building should be misappropriation use only as defined by the town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire around December fifth, twenty twenty-four. You comply with all requirements by the state county or town agency. All seven requirements, so. That is a motion.
Okay, motion, do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second?
Mister Malta?
Aye.
Mister Jordina?
Aye.
Mister Cosell?
Aye.
Mister Mixel?
Aye.
Mister Brady?
Aye.
Mister Frishani?
Aye.
Okay, we're good with that. Want to go final?
We have the motion for final approval for accessory building at eighteen twenty Taberray Trail. Condition on all the preliminary approval statements.
Okay, drawing is submitted.
Drawing, yes, yeah, I submit.
All right, you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
We're good, okay. Good to go, bud.
All right, thank you.
See you later. All right, anything else we have to, uh?
Yeah, meeting minutes for November seventh, we'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, your motion, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, before we go, we're, we're going to lose somebody from our board here.
The Terry.
That's that? So, Jamie, step up your.
We're out to dinner and soccer.
We can do that.
You weren't supposed to tell her.
We can do that. No, but just wish you good luck.
Thank you.
On your future move, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Good, good having you here.
It's good being here.
Good luck.
We wouldn't mediate if the town.
Yeah. Okay, I guess that's it. We're all set for tonight.
Thank you, holidays, everybody.
This was a good year.